Start recording, Chris. Okay, yes, I get it, okay. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format as allowed by legislative and executive branch actions. With that, I don't remember one's pledge of allegiance. Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, just as a personal privilege, this is the forty-eighth month that we have been together. How did that happen? How did that, you know, two meetings, two standing meetings a month, forty-eight months?
I think it happened in such a short period of time.
Exactly.
And they started in such a different world.
You're right, so.
And there we are.
And I'm looking forward to the next four years working together as well, so, as a result of the election, so.
Likewise.
Public forums, anyone interested in speaking in public forum on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three and its approval of minutes, the November one, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments, questions, changes, suggested changes?
One, one small typo.
Okay, Lou.
On item thirteen, it should probably be H O E Y.
That would work.
Sorry, Tracy.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but under item four, which is Chief Hyatt's report, there were four items that we voted on, purchasing items, but there's no text under two, three, and four as far as the action taken. I think it just needs to.
I think we took them all, we took them as whole as.
We kind of submitted it as one package because it all involved fitting out the cars.
It's not.
Clear.
To approve all four police department requests. I see, it's in the motion. Yeah, yeah, maybe if possible, maybe they could be reordered so that those items appear above the motion. I don't know.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. I agree. What they are is probably not bad. I mean, it was radar, I thought, and cameras.
Video.
And then the building fit out of the interior.
Yeah, they're listed here, but after the motion and it looks, well, I didn't read it carefully. I was confused.
Yeah, we'll rearrange that. Okay, Trey. Anything else? Hearing none. Let me try your minds, Select Woman Ruah.
Aye.
For those in the room, we try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item five, Public Works Director, Tom Fillion. Hey, Tom, here.
One-on-one, I'm taking a left on a Jefferson. Check it out.
Good morning. All right, we're looking to purchase salt from Morton. And it's six hundred, six hundred tons at fifty-seven fifty this year. It's seven dollars and fifty cents higher than it was last year. We had a lot of, a lot of issues with this. As far as contact with people, they're the ones that won the bid and state bid, so I wasn't happy with a lot of the going back and forth because I think the state was fighting the issue that Morton wanted to get more money. So they really held us off this year as far as, look at the timing at this point now that we're actually trying to get this thing passed. So that's, that's where we're at, fifty-seven fifty a ton for rock salt from the state bin and from Morton saw.
All right, Tom, at one point there was, as you just mentioned, there was a lack of communication between Morton.
Wait, closing on Jefferson.
And in your office, I know Ralph was working diligently to try to get that. So this full six hundred tons are going to be made available to us?
Yes, because we put in for that at the beginning and then, you know, usually in the summertime, they'll, they'll send out a thing from the state. We filed that in and we, we put in so that we're involved in that, in that bid there. We put in for six hundred tons, so that should be honored. And then if you're not in it, then you would have an issue. And then Morton is the one that won the bid for our area. DOT forty-two, that's the saving area.
Okay. Good. Do we, do we pay, pay for all that at once or we just pay for what we need?
We, we, we have to take fifty percent of it as part of the, the contract and that's usually the, you know, we easily do that. But we have at least six hundred that's, that's mostly put aside for us. And then plus going forward, usually they're fine as far as giving us more.
Good, all right. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the winter rock salt from Morton Staff, off state contract at, for six hundred tons at fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents per ton?
Second.
Second. Anything further? Let me try your minds, Select Woman Renner. I mean, Select Woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Item five dot two, Tom, discuss to take possible action contract with Durham Middlefield Services for brush grinding.
Yes, I'd like to recommend going with them this year. I had a couple of issues last year, not that Ethan wasn't good at what he was doing. It's just his timing and stuff like that was a little rough. And this year they, they wanted more money. I told him that our, what our budget line is. And what, what he put forth to me was a couple of options that at this point I wasn't too happy with. So I went looking and Durham is willing to stay at the fifteen thousand, but also us paying the fuel costs, which, what we, when we were with them before we did that. We paid the fuel costs and actually gave them some help. But this is going to be, just to let everybody know, this is going to be a big issue going forward because they're all, any contractor that's going to be doing this job is going to want fuel costs. And some of the numbers that I got, I went looking. Northeast Clearing, it was thirty-six thousand dollars to chip the pile, you know, like a seven thousand yard pile. And then Supreme just gave me a price of over thirty thousand dollars to do the same. So this budget line item is going to have to be changed going forward. It's just not enough to sustain. And the amount of material that we have coming in at this time is also going to be an issue. It's going to, because really we should be chipping twice a year.
How much is a piece of this equipment?
I know.
How much is this piece of equipment cost?
One of those grinders like that, you're looking at probably half a million.
I mean, can you figure out a, this is the perfect regionalization thing.
Yes.
Branford, Guilford, Madison, Clinton, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they did get something, yeah, where it's a shared thing like that before, but that failed before. I mean, we did have something like that. That company went out of business. You know?
What's the lifespan of a machine like this?
Yeah.
It's a high maintenance machine. And, and the lifespan, I'm sure that you could probably get ten years out of it, but what happens is whatever's in that pile, and we've had it happen before. Any metal goes through the grid screen and it's just a dangerous and high maintenance machine to, to have. So, you know, that's why also we did have an issue before with Durham when a piece of metal went through their, their screen and they expected us to pay for it. And I says, there's no way that we could determine. We shake the piles beforehand. We, we watch out, you know, I have a guy actually separating before it goes through. So there's nothing else that we can do as far as it's part of grinding that you will find different things in there and, and you're going to have issues at some points. So like I said, they're the only ones willing to stay within our budget line at this point. I'm right now, I'm probably running close to seven thousand yards. And they're, they were saying fifteen thousand to grind six thousand yards. So I'm sure they've been pretty good before. I'm sure that they would accommodate us on that as long as I get this thing ground quickly.
And Tom, when you say Durham, this is actually the town of Durham's machine?
Yes, yep, it's like a, I, it's the town of Durham's machine. I don't know how the setup is. You know, they have a guy from Public Works actually run this thing, but I don't think that Public Works is the owner of the machine.
Okay.
And you know, with the wear, it's got to be brutal. Those, those, those teeth or whatever are inside that thing, got to be enormously expensive.
They definitely.
That, that would be the, the, it's not like you buy it and it would be no cost.
Yeah.
Well, not only the machine, it's the operator, thirty thousand, you know.
Yeah, no, I had the same thought.
It wouldn't even cover the lifespan of the machine, so. If I'm asking the question, it's not. I, I thought it might be a hundred or two hundred thousand dollar machine, then there might be some logic, but not that I have a million.
What else was I going to say? Oh, not that the world needs any more signs, but I don't suppose that this is, this is down at the stump up, right? I mean, I don't suppose it would help to have a sign that just reminded people absolutely no metal in the brush piles?
Yes, we have two signs, one on the gate and one as you approach the attendance house to let them know what is, you know, required there that we only, we're supposed to only be taking three inch stuff. And I have an attendant there and he's, you know, supposed to use his discretion to a certain point there. But no matter what, you know, we still have our stuff that comes in there, you know, that has to be ground too. And at this point, we've had a lot of big stuff that over the years has not been ground. So I was talking to Matt too, that we're going to have to come up with something where we jump ahead a little bit to reorganize that pit down there because it's been a lot of years and it, it really needs some help down there as far as making sure that we're going to fit everything in there.
All right, let's move for a second.
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? Let me try your minds, Select, Select Woman Ruah.
Aye.
The room, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Tom, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Item six, Town Engineer Janice Plaziac, six dot one, is discussing take possible action to contract with Service Station Equipment, Inc., under state contract sixteen P S X zero-one-one for removal of underground storage tanks and installation of new tanks at Public Works. Janice, floor is yours. Good morning.
Good morning. So as you know, we've been working towards replacing the underground storage tanks at the DPW facility with the above-ground tanks, which you already approved the purchase of the system for the above-ground tanks. And those have been ordered. And as you're aware, we actually have to do the connections with licensed contractors for the new system as well as remove the old tank. So that's the, the project before you now for your approval. We did reach out to the two state bid contractors for this type of work. One only provided services for actual tank removals and not for the connections that we need done for the Petrovent system, the monitoring Vitera, Viterut system. But the other one did provide both the connection for the new system as well as the removal of the old tank system and, and appeared to have better pricing and a better approach to the project. So that's what's before you now is the approval of that package, which the estimate that was provided in the packet was about fifty-seven thousand dollars to do both the connections for the new system and the removal of the old. Keeping in mind, we're, we're kind of, we're D C-ing this project ourselves. DPW will do as much of the work in terms of excavating, setting the new tanks, prepping the area. But there's always, as you know, a few unknowns when you get into work in the ground. So I did add into this proposal because they will bill us for time and materials, like a twenty percent contingency to max out at, at, at a, you know, an approval to spend up to seventy thousand dollars. Anything beyond that, we would come back to this board for their approval. So I hope, you know, that approach is, seems reasonable and that you would, you know, approve this so that we can continue to move forward on replacing those tanks.
Great. Thank you, Janice. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second. Any further discussion? Any questions?
Janice, what would be an example of a problem once you get in there other than leaks? I mean, you know, if you find a leak, you got a problem, but I mean, we're not talking about the possibility of any electrical lines or drainage lines that we're not aware of, are we?
Well, you know, we, we have mapping, but you never know what's going to be in the ground. For example, Charlie, from when I took over, we were reporting to the state that these tanks were fiberglass and come to find out they're actually steel. So, you know, we have records, but they're only as good as, you know, they are until you dig in the ground. Yeah, the main, my, my main concern is, is, you know, potential leaks, but we have been testing these tanks and finding them to be tight. So there's, there's not the expectation that that'll be a problem. The other thing is, is if you actually look at the proposal, she's estimating times and, you know, costs for all these items. And, you know, the final statement basically says it'll be billed at actual time and parts used. So, you know, in someone's estimate, it's only as good as their estimate.
Okay, all right. I'm ready to vote. You ready, room? Okay, let me try your minds, Select Woman Ruah.
Aye.
And those are room, those, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Item six dot two, that's to consider to take possible action to contract with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors from the on-call list for the reconstruction of Goose Lane from Carter Drive to Nut Plains Road. Janice?
Yeah, so I just wanted to report too, first off, that we, we use Summer Hill for the design of Nut Plains and we thankfully just got the commitment to fund from DOT this past week. So that was a positive reinforcement. And we have funding lined up through Lot Zip as well for continuing the remainder of, you know, this road, which changes names from Nut Plains to Goose Lane down to near I ninety-five. And for this proposal of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is a very reasonable cost for, you know, substantial project like this for design of the reconstruction of this road.
Is there a motion?
Someone?
I'll make a motion, but I have a question.
Sure, Lou. Is the design work going to take into consideration either, you know, basically bicycling use, wider shoulder, straightening some, some line curves? I mean, is, is, is part of their charge to make the road more accessible?
Not entirely. We're looking to try and stay within the footprint of the road as much as possible, similar to what we did on Nut Plains to avoid impacts to adjacent property owners. What's happening on Nut Plains is we are resulting in two eleven-foot lanes and then a painted two-foot shoulder on either side of the road. So by minimizing the twenty-six foot wide, you know, paved area, we're still kind of providing a somewhat safe zone for, you know, walkers or bikers, but it's not, not a dedicated lane to, you know, standards that are required for, you know, like a width of at least five feet or more for that type of use for the shoulder. This project is going to be dealing with some sightline problems, some inconsistencies with the road, some drainage problems with the road. And we will accommodate as much as we can like we did with Nut Plains, some additional shoulder area that will be painted out. So it's a little more defined, the use of the road and, you know, across the cross section. I would like to point out, we may be looking at something at the lower end of Goose Lane, but nothing for the full length of it that I'm aware of. And I don't believe it was recommended under the Safe Streets Task Force for any kind of pedestrian improvements from the last draft I saw.
Janice, I have a question. Didn't you say when you talked about this probably a year ago, you're going to do something with the intersection of that V intersection near the cemetery of Goose Lane and Nut Plains to improve the sightlines there?
Yeah, so that's actually part of the Nut Plains project, which we just got commitment to fund and is already, you know, through preliminary design. For Nut Plains, we will be going out very soon to the public to present the project. We were waiting, we had to wait for the commitment to fund in order to then do a public outreach on the project and then follow up with any revisions to design and then move forward with our inland wetlands permitting to move the project forward to construction. But that one, yeah, that intersection is going to be included in the Nut Plains section of funding. And we'll be looking at, there's a couple of other intersections that have some limited sightlines and challenges that are along the way for this section of road as well.
Okay.
Janice, just a quick one. In, as you mentioned, you're using, we're going to be using eleven-foot lanes, both on Nut Plains, eleven-foot roadways for each side. My understanding is that the wider you make a road, the more likely people are to exceed the speed limits. So do these eleven-foot lanes are consistent with what the Safe Streets Task Force is looking for?
Um, well, they've been making suggestions of ten-foot lanes, which I find to be very restrictive and challenging for a collector road like this. I think we want to balance safety of the vehicles and, you know, other uses of the road. So I, I've been a little bit pushing back, quite frankly, on the idea of ten-foot lanes on this, these two roads. These two roads qualify for this type of funding because they are collector roads and meaning that they do carry more traffic on a daily basis than our local roads do. So I just, and, and that's something I've talked with Mike from Summer Hill about. And he's also reaching out to another traffic engineer to get his opinion, but our, our collective opinion so far is we wouldn't want to go any more narrow than the eleven-foot lanes. It's a careful balance between trying to provide some shoulder width so people can possibly walk a little more safely on the road, you know, kind of sharing the road and then not getting too wide and, but also not becoming too narrow. It's kind of trying to find a spot.
But a two-foot, a two-foot painted shoulder on each side would be an improvement on what we have now.
Yeah, in some areas we're actually narrowing the road and in some areas we're widening the road. It's, you know, very subtle, but the road is, you know, an old road that is very inconsistent in width. But yeah, I believe that adding the shoulder stripe even is a great benefit for a road like this because it kind of defines the travel way to a more narrow section of the eleven feet. You know, and now, you know, newer cars are even have those, you know, lane diversion warnings and things like that. And they use that white line for that purpose. So it's kind of helpful using the new technology that's available in cars to, to kind of set the path for the vehicles so that there's maybe a little room for others to use the road.
Right. So I'm sorry to beat this to death at this point, but the, the, what makes roads like this exist as it exists right now is where the shoulder has tended to narrow has tended to be at curves, at places where the, the side property juts into the road. And it's like a combination that's really murderous. So if, in fact, you can get as close as possible, if the, if the, if the design is designed as close as possible to have a consistent two-foot shoulder, that's a vast improvement. I understand it doesn't meet the safe street five foot. It's not, this is not a walkway or pedestrian way. It's an opportunity for somebody on a bike riding single file to at least have some of their own space without getting squeezed periodically on curves.
Right, right. Yeah, we will be consistent with our, our, our cross section, which is an improvement, as you said, Lou, because at culverts and things, things, the road tends to narrow in that area. You'll still have that consistent, you know, eleven-foot lane with a two-foot shoulder, you know, carried through those areas.
Sounds good. And okay, good, sounds good.
Let me try your minds. The first select, Select Woman Ruah.
Aye.
Just got promoted.
No, no, thanks, I'm happy.
Those in the room? Opposed, staying recused, hearing none, motion carries. Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, Parks Recreation Director Rick Mader on seven dot one, concerned to take possible action on contractor for installation of splash pad at Jacob's Beach. Morning, Rick. And based on the conversation we had the other day, you anticipating we're going to table this?
Yeah, Matt, the, the price quota came in was, was very, very, very high. And we're, I went back to the owner of the company and they're actively soliciting more prices. I think what happened is the company put it together real quick. I told them we needed something and it was, it is not reasonable. We know prices may be higher than what we originally thought, you know, because everything's gone up, but not, not by them, although they, they did. It was way, way over what we think is reasonable.
Rick, can, can, if, even if we table it, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. I, I was speaking with a Guilford citizen who is not in favor of this project and most Guilford citizens are in favor of the project, but I just thought I would bring up her question just because she asked me. She was concerned about, and Matt, this may be more to you than to Rick. She said that she thought that the project was going to be completely privately funded with town responsibilities going forward. And then she said, now you're going to, you, the town is going to use ARPA money. And I said, well, that was a, I said, I know that was on a list of possible ARPA projects. And I guess, just for clarification, I have personally think ARPA money would be fine for this, but we do, the project does have some private funds that were raised. Are they still going to be put towards the project as well?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, because that's. This is Veronica.
Hi.
Hi. Yes, that is absolutely our, our intention is to go forward with the public money that we've raised.
That's what I thought. I mean, really, this is me speaking because I felt responsible because somebody asked me about it. So I was just reviewing it. How much money did you raise, Veronica, so far?
In excess of sixty thousand.
Okay, that's terrific. And the whole project now, the whole project cost is in question. Is that it? It's not, the money's, the, the figure we were using is, may change. Is that correct, Rick?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The estimate we got from the architect in the, the, well, I can tell you, the quote we got was about two hundred thousand dollars over what the estimate was from the architect. And I talked to him about it and he said, it's crazy, it's way, way, way high. He's never been off. He says if I'm, if he's ever off, it's by maybe three to five percent, not, not that much. So we think the, the contractor just threw the number together pretty quick. They never actually came down to visit the site to really look at and, you know, to understand the whole, the whole parameters of it, I think. And I think he just threw a, a number together. And so we're actively seeking more. The, the owner of the company that we would have the contract with, they, they sub it out to different, you know, installers. And they've contacted four or five other companies. So, and, and several of those are definitely interested in the project. So I hope to hear from them early this week. Hope to meet with them so they can see, you know, the location and get a better understanding of the, the scope of it and then get a good number.
Okay.
How do the, oh, I'm sorry, Siri.
That's all I have, thank you.
Rick, how do these issue, or will these issues affect the timing of this project? That's a problem.
Well, you know, Charlie, it's a question, because you know, a lot of things are backed up, you know, with supplies. Our hope was to get this approved today, you know, in November, so that we, we were figuring it could take three to four months to get all the materials. That would put us into February, so let's say, and then get the construction starting in, in March. We, you know, our goal is have this open for Memorial Day weekend. That's our goal. The absolute drop dead would be mid-June. I mean, we really have to, if we're going to do it, it's got to be done before there's a lot of people on the beach and before camp starts down there. But that was the goal to get it. I think we're good.
My only point would be rather than have a, lose two weeks, I don't think two weeks necessarily at this point are critical, but, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to a special meeting or anything if you got numbers and you needed a vote from us to move forward at any given point.
That'd be very nice, Charlie, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
We can do it remotely. That's right. You know, two weeks might not make a difference, but.
This has always been our concern is because of the issues the town is experiencing in delays in, in product, supply issues and stuff. This is one of the concerns that the committee has had and why we're pressing to move forward. So I appreciate.
Yeah, with any of these contractors, I mean, you know, anything that's shovel-ready and, and, you know, all of the paperwork is done, you know, that, that just pushes you closer to the, you know, priority. So.
Charlie, that was a good suggestion, because we actually don't meet for three weeks after this meeting, because our meeting is on the sixth. We had a, the first, this month was the first of the month. It was the, yeah. Second meeting was early in the month. It's a great suggestion. We'd be happy to do a meeting.
Yeah, just do it.
It was, they're all there.
Yeah. Can I make a, a quick comment? Sandy raised the point about ARPA funds being used for this project. And there's a lot of public attention right now on the situation in West Haven. I just think we should make it clear that we've been completely transparent about our plan for using these funds. We discussed the fact that this project is an appropriate use of those funds and it's all on record.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. And the, the one distinction I would make, and thanks for bringing up the West Haven thing, because that is an absolute mess, but that was, that was with CARES money, not ARPA. But that was, that was with CARES money, uh, not ARPA money. So it was the first round of funding.
That's public money.
It was public, it was, it was, it was funded.
It's a distinction.
Mary, Mary Jane could tell you the difference. We filed, uh, we we have filed all of our reports on uh, what we've, what we've spent with the CARES Act money. Uh, we're nowhere near what West Haven has, but um, and uh, Mary Jane consistently updated that list. And uh, we could share, I could share that with you folks if you want, in terms of knowing what we spent the CARES money on uh, for reimbursement. Uh, Mary Jane, will you make that available to everybody, please?
Good idea.
Good point. Another, another effort at transparency. This is, this is where we.
Yeah, you just gotta stay ahead of it.
Thank you for that. Uh, all right, is there a motion to table uh, this act, this item? A second.
A second.
Let me try your minds, select woman.
I.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Post staying, recuse us hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, uh, Mandy and Veronica also for uh, uh, participating today. Uh, item eight. Uh, environmental player Kevin McGee, Kevin, come on up, discuss take possible action by wetlands impact, third party review for the affordable housing application. Kevin, good morning.
Good morning. So the in the one lots commission has in front of it a um application from the Connecticut Affordable Housing Initiative LLC for a um, two building fifty units, fifty-one bedroom units in each building there, um apartments. Um, the commission is reviewing this application. Um, the application calls for construction of parking areas, septic system, utilities, stormwater management. Um, the commission, when they received the application on October thirteenth, um uh, found or determined this project has a potential significant impact on the adjacent wetlands and the West River, which is adjacent to the project site, and decided to make this also a complex application where it requires, uh, which allows them to hire third party consultants to help review the application. Um, in this case, they're looking for basically a engineering firm uh, with and also wetlands experts to provide review and comments back to the commission. Um, we did get two proposals on this one here. Um, one from Cody's Forty Associates and the other one from West Cop and Meats. Um, both of their um, engineering services came out the same fee level of seventy-eight hundred dollars. Um, I also asked for um um, addendums there for if they have any wetland specialists also assist for the project. So we have um, addendum one, which um, you see is Cody's body here with the thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars attached to their seventy-eight hundred dollars. Um, so we're looking to um, commission voted then at their past meeting this past once in November tenth to approve Cody's bodies as their um consultant to review this um project here. And the the fees for this is actually pass through funding. The fees for this is actually um, the applicant, um, we let the applicant know the um estimated cost of the review. They provide the town with the um, a check for that fee, which gets deposited into a account. Um, the engineers do their work and the review of the projects. And then if there's any money left over, they get that money returned to them. And then if there's um, the review goes over due to potentially um uh, comments from the reviewers, certain things are needed and it takes potentially some back and forth between the engineers to give resolution to an issue there. Um, that time, I can increase the the fees for the project there. Um, so that's, so then that's the money before they get their approval, they're sent to them. Um, that additional fees, if they go over, the estimated amount would be then charged um, invoiced to that um applicant, in this case, um, the affordable housing group there.
Kevin, I just want you to stress for a minute what the, what constitutes a complex application, because typically, you know, this is not typical. Uh, although it is probably applicable on larger projects. And you uh, us having used this tool in recent times or in any process.
Yeah, we've used this, um, the Christians use this thing um quite a few times. It's not new to this project here. Um, we did it last with about a year ago with the view of Guilford or the um Long Hill Estates East subdivision up on Long Hill Road there for the thirty-one lot subdivision there. Um, which had um concerns with development there with a stream river, a stream crossing and then the um um, adjacent um West River also on that site there. Um, it's been used a couple of years before that with a housing plan for three fifty Goose Lane. Um, prior to that, we had, we used it for the development of the Guilford Village West project, which is currently under construction now next to the Guilford transfer station across from the Guilford Commons there. Um, these are all larger projects, um, which may have some significant impacts on the wetlands without proper review there.
But that's thank you for, thank you for that clarification and the point I want to drive home that this, we are not using this uh, basically hiring technical expertise to help us evaluate uh, these plans. Uh, it's, it's, it's not uncommon for the the commission to use this tool to understand and to review uh, plans that are put together in in fast.
Are these plus uh, passed on to the developer at some point?
Correct, they they provide us the, we provide them an estimate. They provide us with a check, um, hopefully before our next meeting for the estimated cost.
Whether or not it passes.
Whether or not passes. That's why we have the check ahead of time there. Uh, and then they then get invoices if it goes over or if we are my, the estimate there we come up with is is too high. Um, then they get that that funding returned um back to them. Um, most, actually all the pieces we had, we actually asked for increased funding than what the estimates come up with from the engineers there.
Did you say you're, that we are asking for the additional forty percent on top of the thirteen?
I would suggest that, because we, like I said, my history with these projects is it goes beyond one or two reviews, which is in their their estimated cost there. Um, I'm hoping that, I mean, they gave a really good presentation on last Wednesday's meeting. I really can't go into it since there's a public hearing there, but um, hopefully the the details they provided. Um, I'm listening to that, hope um um, would, um, sounds like they have a lot of the information and hopefully the reviewers don't have um too lengthy of um comments which require additional updates on the plans there and then re-review those uh, updates there.
So Kevin, so this is, uh, this proposal is being advanced by the uh, developer under the state statute that allows the a certain amount of override of local zoning. Is it an eight thirty G?
Yes, an eight thirty G project.
But that doesn't mean that we still, the town, it still doesn't have an opportunity to make sure our health and safety is properly considered, which is the purpose of this wetlands review.
Correct, we, yeah, the Wetlands Commission reviews not really health and safety, but reviews effects to the um, potential effects to the adjacent wetlands. And and wet street, but it, but but some other, I mean, you're looking at concentrations of um, like I said, with the large sanitary system here, about seven thousand five hundred gallons per day. Um, they're watching, like I said, they'll be kind of seeing that and make sure that doesn't cause any detriment to the fish population of the river, which then also drinking water and stuff are similar tied into those standards.
So the purpose here is to provide necessary oversight of a project despite the fact that it has a little bit of this state statute protection.
Correct, I mean.
The town, the town still has its rights to make sure at least this part of it and I suspect other parts are done properly.
Correct, and like I said, the commission is not affected by that thirty G statute there. So the commission is just doing its job as it does with any other application that comes in front of it. They um, not even looking at it as a, they're just looking at as a hundred units of apartments being stuck on a property and owner and uses, not even in consideration to this, the members here.
Okay, just a good quick point. The legislature this past session actually addressed this issue about the applicability for these types of reviews on eight thirty G applications. And the towns are not able, are prohibited from uh, you know, extravagant costs associated above and beyond what they would normally pay for any type of development. So um, in in an effort to ensure that the people, you know, that the local zoning departments or local zoning boards uh, are are playing by the rules. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Uh, any, any further questions or comments or questions? Hearing, uh, let me try your minds, select woman.
I.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Those staying, recuse us hearing none, motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much. You gonna stick around?
Yeah, get for the end section there.
Yep. Um, item nine, discussing the possible actions. Or bid number three dash twenty-one, twenty-two diesel fuel, number two, heating oil and unleaded gasoline. When bids are opened, uh, December third, uh, at ten AM, um tractually or not tractually, per the uh, the process is used. We have one hour to make a decision because these are spot market pricing, these, you know, these folks are going. And it literally changed by the hour. Uh, so we have one hour to make the award, uh, to the, to the low bidder or the the most appropriate uh, there. So, yeah, is there a motion to allow me to do so? Any further comments or questions?
I do have a quick question. Are, as a result of the number of hybrids that have been purchased and even the frankly, the fleece vehicles that we have now, the explorers are more efficient than the old graphics. Are we buying less fuel than we were ten or fifteen years ago?
Actually, uh, actually, Mary Jane, you want to talk about the, you know, usage estimates that is going into compiling this?
Yeah, every year we do a complete review over um, what we've spent in the last two years and where we expect to go into the future. Um, to be honest, I I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can't tell you if there is any significant change um, in where we are, but I I believe it's been about the same since at least I've been here. Um, but if if you want us to do that type of review, we certainly could do that.
I'd be interested, especially all the conversion we did to gas, you know, all these new units and schools and everything.
Right, add, add to that, that we, at the end of the last fiscal year, we had excess capacity that we hadn't utilized and had to pay for regardless, so. Um, uh, Mary Jane can take a look at those numbers and and.
I would, I would like to see a ten year trend, if that's not too difficult.
I'm sure we can pull together a ten year trend in terms of the uh, the.
I don't know if we need ten, because a lot of cost is. Been the last four or five years.
Yeah, I thi- I think cost is irrelevant. I think it's the, in terms of gallons, right? Uh, and and there are a couple of different things here. We're talking, uh, you know, fuel as well as gasoline, heating oil as well as gasoline, so.
Right.
Okay.
And 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 with regard to the fuel, do we have to buy separate heating oil and vehicle diesel? Or as a town, do we get somehow to override that? Because it's a tax issue, not a product issue, isn't it?
Yeah, but we don't pay tax, we don't pay tax.
Yeah, that's my point. So are we just buying diesel and using it both in the vehicles and in the, in the structures?
Yeah, I thought so.
It's heating oil gets.
Died or something.
We just need Tom here to, how many vehicles do we have that are diesel?
Got a few.
Hey, man.
All right.
I hope that most fire departments, most public works is diesel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would just like to to add um, that there are some taxes that even the town can't get out of, so um there are a couple of taxes we do pay.
Built it to.
And and we're accepting pricing on all those different products. So the bid has, you know what I'm trying to.
The final number. Yeah, it, it, we actually, we actually, there'll be three buckets that they they price it, uh, price it.
But can we mix and match from different, different vendors? Just on the board event has had such success doing that.
Yeah, it's uh, typically the uh, we, we look in terms of the overall uh, cost, yeah, the total cost. It just, it it makes it easier for the signal, signal delivery. We can take a look at it this year, though. All right, um, we already, no, no, sorry, pop this down. You got it. All right, motion in a second.
Yeah, already done.
All right.
Question. It says the, the new high school generator, thirty-seven hundred gallons. I mean, how often have we used that generator? We have to keep refilling it.
You have to, you have to burn it, because otherwise the gas, the fuel gets.
It deteriorates.
It deteriorates, so there's, there's a process. We can also, I put an additive in for my, my understanding, because in my last job, we actually had generators for uh, for for our data center. Um, but and and they're running it at least once a week for a test. That's, that's classic, uh, just like the one comes on here every Tuesday. Um, now you're not gonna burn through all of it, but you need to keep utilizing some of it, burning it down and and shaking it up, so.
That's a lot of fuel.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hope we don't need it for the storage.
Yeah, right. I'd rather use it in testing.
All right. Okay, uh, let me try your minds, select woman.
I.
Uh, those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Those staying, recuse us hearing none, motion carries. Uh, item ten is uh, discussing the possibly set a public hearing date on affordable housing ordinance. I'm going to uh, make a motion to table this, as we are not prepared, legal is still uh, coming to grips with exactly how to uh, how how to address that ordinance. I met most recently with uh, Town Council Barrett and uh, outside in the firm, Karen Kravitz uh, on Friday the last, and we just didn't want to rush it uh, through. And I wanted to have the ordinance ready prior to setting the meeting, so we can probably plan on doing, setting that meeting and uh, at our next, at our next meeting in December. So uh, is there a second to uh?
A second to table.
Uh, let me try your minds, select woman.
I.
Uh, those in the room.
Aye.
Those staying, recuse us hearing none, motion carries. Item eleven, uh, requests.
Matt, you have to, you skipped over Mary Jane, just so you know, you still have to go back to the finance report at some point.
Oh, yes. How did it manage that? Why don't we do finance now? You're on. Mary Jane, you're on.
Thought maybe I was gonna be off the hook this month.
Uh, no.
Uh, so I I noticed on Board Pack Medical is first. Did you want to start there?
Yeah, quite a, it's the top of the list.
All right, so um, medical, we had a low month in October. Um, not much more to say other than that. Uh, we're about two hundred and sixty thousand under budget, um, estimated for the year.
Okay. And uh, stop loss has just started to uh, to to be.
Just starting, just starting to kick in, yep.
And uh, cases, uh, cases over the seventy-five?
Uh, we have seven at this point.
Okay. Nearing the one fifty, those seven?
Uh, two.
Two, okay. Thank you.
Two already, two already over the one fifty.
Oh, this, report, all right. Okay.
Uh, move on to expenses. Uh, we are thirty-three percent through the year. Our expenses this year are at thirty-eight point five um, versus thirty-six point five last year. There's just two items I wanted to discuss specifically. You'll see EDC um, is trending higher um, as of October. Sherry has begun working full time and a shared responsibility between the towns of Madison and Guilford. And we will be billing Madison quarterly um, for her services, so you will see that um fluctuate um, month by month. Uh, the other line item I wanted to discuss was capital. Um, we have some items in engineering, IT and park and rec that are showing over expended in capital line items. Um, this is due to um, having funding in other areas uh, such as our reserve fund balance, um, that will cover those expenses. And the fire department, not the fire, but the building department's vehicle um, purchase order that is is sitting out there is um, was carried in force from last year, so that'll be covered as well. Do you have any other questions?
Uh, Mary Jane, just one other thing. Um, as a reminder, we were talking about the uh, shared economic development coordinated position. Uh, we anticipate utilize, because that was not budgeted uh, last April, when the voters voted on it, um, there's, there's an opportunity for us to use American Rescue Plan funds uh, for the costs associated with the the position uh, that we're not budgeted. So there will be, there's an opportunity to use the ARPA funds there as well. Any other questions on expenses or comments? Nope. All right, now, Mary Jane, we've completely thrown this out of whack, right? You always start with revenues.
You know, I spend a few days out of the office and everything goes to hell, right?
Well, and and I set us off on the wrong, on the foot here, anyway. Revenue?
That's okay. I'm just glad we were able to get everything together for you, even though I wasn't there. Um, so uh, showing a uh, reduction in the Board of Selectmen revenue line item, and that is the. because we transferred the energy performance contract credits back to the board of ed. If you remember last month, I mentioned that that revenue would be shared with the board of ed. So that's what that reduction is for. Taxes, tax revenue is is very strong through October. And the last thing I just wanted to mention was that our land use offices are still very busy showing a lot of permits coming in. If you look at the building department and the health department, you'll see that their revenue is trending higher, and that's due to permits still coming in to the offices.
And our new permit schedule. Our fee schedule.
Yeah, we have that built into the budget, however, so. Any other questions on that revenue?
I'm good. What else?
I just had one other thing. I thought you might be interested. Um, I have numbers through November first for the Mulberry Point Water Assessments.
Oh, yes.
That that went out. So um, we sent out a hundred and fifty one bills for all of the properties. We've had some glitches. We've gone back and forth. Hopefully all of them will be taken care of and have no problem in April. Of that a hundred and fifty one, and and remember, I haven't been in the office for a little bit, so these numbers might be updated. But before I left, a hundred and thirty three out of the one fifty one had already made payment. Thirteen properties were paid in full. Two properties paid half of their assessment ahead of time. Twenty three paid both installments in October, and I was showing eighteen unpaid as of that date. But I I thought that was very good. We have our closing on the loan this Thursday. I'll be starting to make our payments on that. But I think the process has gone pretty smoothly. I I can just like to report that almost every single phone call I got, and trust me, I got a lot of them. People were thankful for the water project and were more than happy to pay their assessments.
Great. Thank you for that update.
When you have eighteen issues, how many months or how many payments before we have a problem? In other words, when do we start whatever collection action we have to do?
That these taxes will be treated. This assessment will be treated exactly as the taxes are. So whatever rules and regulations the tax collector has for your regular property taxes will be assessed in the same way for these.
All right. Remember, these are all leaned anyway, for the for the amount of the
But it'd be interesting to see two or three pages through with that eighteen number shakes up.
Yeah, again, I I, that that number might be updated from from the data that I have.
All right. Thank you, Mary Jane. Anything else? Mary Jane? Thank you.
Thanks.
Request for used town property, eleven dot one is acting request from the Guilford Art Center.
Oh, wait, actually, can can we just get a quick report on the pension numbers that are here?
Sure.
I mean, the O P E D was pretty small. It's our first report, I think, or early, but the pension, just real quick. I'm sure we're doing great, but could you just give us a quick summary?
Okay, let me pull that up. Hold on just a sec. You guys, I don't think normally see these.
Right, I was interested.
Yes, so um we're current, we're currently at eighty four million. We started the fiscal year off at about eighty three million. You know, we we've had some ups and downs this particular month of September. We had some significant, I'll say, unrealized losses, almost three million dollars. Certainly not something that we, you know, we're not going to recoup. The the problem I have with these reports is it's really a shot in the shot in the dark on one day in the life of the pensions. So, you know, the next day could show a different picture. But this this just really shows total of all the ins and outs of everything in the pension, including the amounts that come out for the pension benefits. You'll see that at four hundred and thirty eight thousand. This was a large month. We had two large lump sum payments, which attributes also to the reduction in pension for the month.
So in other words, people can 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 take out a lump sum at at retirement rather than the annuitized payments?
It it's only an option on the board of ed side.
Board of ed side, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, over the years, we pretty much changed that out of most of the union contracts. So it's not, the lump sum option has been much reduced, but there's still some unions that have it, I guess.
And the board of ed doesn't include the certified teachers there at the state. That's right.
Right.
Okay. Mitch, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just to be perfectly clear on that, the board of ed does allow, continues to allow the lump sum option. Sandy is correct. The union contracts have all been adjusted, so there's no longer any lump sums. However, there are five individual contracts, this town of Guilford, that's still, was still potentially have a lump sum when those people retire.
Got it. Thanks, Mitch. Okay, thank you. Anything further? I don't know. So, okay, now we'll go to the rest of town property. Eleven dot one, act on request to Gilbert Art Center place sign on green advertising its holiday shop taking place November one to January ninth twenty twenty one, sign placement eleven fifteen to eleven twenty nine, as well as December thirteenth to the twenty seventh. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second.
Let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye, aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Motion carries, eleven dot two, act on request from the country school to place a sign in the green advertising its open house taking place January thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Sign placement, January sixteenth through the thirtieth. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
Next second.
Try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, eleven dot three, act on request from the Shabat Lubavitch for the shoreline to place a Hanaka menorah on the green. Placement eleven twenty four to twelve eight. Is there a motion?
Some would.
In a second, in a second, try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, eleven dot four, act on request from the shoreline chamber of commerce to use the greens place a sign green advertising its holiday tree lighting taking place December third, twenty twenty one, sign placement will be the night through the, November ninth through the third of December. Is there a motion?
I I'll make a motion.
In a second. Let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven dot five, act on request from Christ Episcopal Church place a sign on the green advertising its chili to go, taking place December third, twenty twenty one. Sign placement eleven nineteen to twelve three. Is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second, second, let me try mine, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor? Those, same refusal, hearing, non motion carries. Item twelve, committee reports, Sandy, anything?
Just just that I've been in discussion with George, and he's been in discussion with the various principles involved in the Woodruff Housing Project. And we we desperately want to have an update, a public information update, and also invite David Fink, who is the statewide housing consultant on affordable housing. And we thought we were going to do it in December, a a public meeting, but we're hoping for more specific information from Neighbor Works New Horizons. And so we we've pushed it off to a date in January.
And I just want to mention, David, the David Fink is serving in a a couple of capacities. He has been engaged by South Central Regional Council of Governments to put together the regional housing plan. As you may recall, we are under an obligation by the state legislature to have a affordable housing plan built in Guilford by and submitted by the end of June twenty twenty two. The council of governments, the legislature allowed us to do a region wide housing plan. And that's, that's where David Fink comes in. He is actually the consultant that is charged with putting together the regional housing plan for our our council of governments. Rather than creating thirteen different housing plans to each individual municipality. So, and we are full participants in that. That's why David would be looking to host informational sessions and information gathering sessions relative to where where we want to be on affordable housing. So anything under correspondence, public works severely report? Interest? Cool business? New business? Public forum, is there anyone left? The, I don't think there's anybody other than us. All right. Item seventeen, discussion on potential property acquisition, and it's going to require executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session and invite Kevin McGee, Gary McCallney and Peter Barrett, as always welcome to participate in this. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second. Let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Inviting Kevin.
Yeah, Kevin, yeah, Kevin and Gary and Peter as well. That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some would.
There's a second, second. Let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
In executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken. We received the briefing on and at this point, we're not going to entertain any motions relative to those those properties. So if there's nothing else.
Wasn't there going to be a motion to approve authorized appraisals?
That's right. I'm sorry. You're right. That's right. And we don't have to list the names of those properties. So is there a motion to approve the the use of two appraisal, the appraisal of two pieces of property?
Some would.
So Gary, Gary's over here passing it.
Okay, all right. Let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Aye, aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
The post, same refusal, sharing, non motion carries. Thank you. With that, if there's anything else anyone has to bring up? Nope, call the entertainer.
Second.
Second.
Undivisible, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye.